Okay, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting of October 24th, 2022. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, tonight. A couple announcements. At long last, our Comcast is back up and running. I saw the picture and the sound today, so we appreciate the work of the city employees trying to help that long and arduous process. So that's a good thing. Also, this is Halloween, is a week from today, and our official Halloween time is 6 to 8 o'clock. So just so everybody is aware of that, and we're looking forward to...
No rain.
Hopefully, nice weather. So we'll move on to public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. Brian, anything? Doesn't look like.
Mr. Mayor, so Roger Knapp promised me he's going to be here to make, to talk about his two items, so maybe we could just wait until the end if he shows up. I know what they are, but I think he would like to talk about it.
I was gonna say, I don't see Roger out here.
Yeah, I don't either.
No, I was looking.
He called me, said he was coming, so.
All right. Anything else? Any other people tonight? Come on up. Introduce yourself for the record.
How are you guys? Daniela, I'm the owner of Boss Barber. This is Mike Jacobic, he also owns Boss Barber as well. So to my understanding, the last meeting was held, you guys voted on the parking space situation. Oh, thanks. On the parking space situation for Boss Barber, unfortunately, we weren't present as we weren't made aware that we were on the agenda for that evening. I wanted to come before you guys today to see if a vote can be held on slightly different terms for the parking spaces. After the last meeting, we came to find out another business in Rochester, St. 1881, was not only able to renegotiate their parking space costs from $7,500 to $1,000, but they were also able to apply what they had paid for previously from two different locations into their new agreements as credits. And I do think that's great for them, as I don't think any small business should have to pay that much for parking spaces. I'm standing before you guys today because I think us, as a business that opened right before COVID, shut down twice, and I went through the whole COVID thing, deserve the same opportunity as well. We paid for spaces that weren't being utilized during the pandemic shutdowns. We never missed a payment, and we still continue to pay. I know it's been a huge emphasis for the council to stay consistent in all city matters, and we do respect that. In conclusion, I do feel that we should stay consistent in this matter as well, so I would like the same opportunity. So I'm hoping we can have the council vote tonight on allowing us to renegotiate our parking costs from $7,500 per space to $1,000, and using our payments we made in the past to our new agreement, like another business in Rochester has been able to do so. Thank you.
So thank you for coming tonight and giving your story. I'll let the city manager respond. I think, I think there was a different circumstance that caused that, so would you like to explain that?
Yeah, and I did explain, I think, to Mike that they never used their spaces because they never built what they had to build. We have a clause in our ordinance that says before you can get a billing permit, you have to make that first payment. So they made both first payments, never, ever did anything with the projects. They never got them open. So that wasn't a credit, it was just, they never kept their, they never kept the payments going because they didn't use the function. You guys have stayed open even though it was COVID, I understand all that, but totally different circumstances. So they didn't get a credit for that. They just got, they started over at $1,000 because they broke their commitment because they hadn't used them for two years.
Okay, I just want to make a comment on that. So I have the meeting minutes from February 28th, city council meeting, and motion, there was a motion by Peterson, Albrecht seconded it. It said to approve the request from Rochester Brunch House at 226 Walnut for reduction in payment and loop parking for St. 1881 for five spaces, and to approve the same request for the Rochester Brunch House for reduction in payment and loop for parking for three spaces, and to apply payments made under original agreements towards their new agreements.
All right, so if, to clarify, maybe a little bit simpler, they never used, they didn't open the business. They didn't put the solarium on, they didn't open 1881. The credit, they had to make two payments, one for each one, because that's our ordinance, but they never got to use the parking. So that was the credit that they got.
I understand that, but in our, in our agreements that we make with the city, it says everything's not refundable.
And that's why they came to council?
We made an exception there for them, so you know, that's kind of like where we're...
That's what we're asking for.
You know, we did it for one business in the city. It says that we renegotiated their costs. We're just asking for renegotiating our costs as well. That's pretty much it.
Council, is there any, any comments? Councilmember Peterson, did you...
Yes. So I do think that the minutes do not, well, first off, the minutes do not totally reflect what actually happened because they didn't use the solarium, which would have made them do that. However, we did, we did renegotiate, I mean, as the minutes state. And I still would make a motion that we would reduce your fees as well, so.
Is there, so there's a motion by councilmember Peterson, is there...
Mr. Mayor, not to get preliminary procedure, but somebody on the winning side of that...
Can't make the motion. Can't make the motion. Yeah, unfortunately, I can't correct.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Well, Michigan State Week, you forgot who I was. I would just suggest maybe, you know, I know we can't vote on it tonight, but maybe Nick, you can work with Nick and maybe there's a different solution than the one we voted on. I'm just trying to, you know, support small business. I know the vote was four to three. Maybe there's another way of addressing this, and maybe put it on a future city council agenda that we can revote on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we could, but it's pretty simple. We said in our agreement, we're not retroing anybody. I love these guys, it's not the point. We took a vote, no circumstances have changed. They're just asking to go from $1,07500. I do appreciate what they did not do. What they could do is not make a payment for a year, and then unfortunately, they couldn't use their business as is because they would be short of parking, then ask again to start. That's basically what had to happen with St. 1881. But they chose not to do that, and I appreciate that. So unfortunately, somebody on the negative side would have to vote yes on a, make a motion and change the vote. There's nothing to negotiate. It's either that we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it, sorry.
I'll say something.
Mayor Proton, Salvia.
Thank you. So I just want to thank you guys for being here tonight, and I really wish you would have been here when we deliberated on this motion and on the agenda item. And it's unfortunate that somehow you weren't notified and weren't aware of that. And you're right, we lowered the parking down to $1,000 because we wanted to support economic development in the city. And I really feel for you, because you guys are the one business that is kind of trapped in the middle on this. And so I, you know, unfortunately, I feel like the motion needs to stand as voted upon at the previous meeting.
They're just slightly different terms. It's not exact terms. We're just asking to apply what we paid in the past now towards our new agreement as well.
No, I understand, again, I feel your pain, but I don't think there's anything we can do right now. So unless there's...
Can I ask why somebody voted no, since I wasn't here last week?
Which way was no?
Yeah, no, not to renegotiate with offer, which was to go, keep the money what they had paid so far, and then go up for $1,000 for seven more spaces for, until the term's over. But, and again, the reason was just straight up, that in our agreement, there was one other group, we said it out loud, the Hemingway, has the same circumstances. They have not committed to renegotiate. When we actually dropped it to $1,000, we had a discussion, should we reach out to the others that haven't, that have already paid? The answer was no. Where do you stop that, draw that line? There's people that paid $12,500, they didn't get a credit at $7,500. Now there's people that paid $7,500 that didn't get a credit at $1,000, Boss Barber and Hemingway. So we just had to make a decision, and we stuck with what we said originally when we went to $1,000.
Was there anybody at $12,500 when we were at $7,500?
Absolutely.
Who was that?
There's two or three of them. I don't off the top of my head right now, but I don't want to say it's wrong.
It goes all the way...
Goes back 19 years, so there's other people that have paid. So you could go, where do you draw the line?
When we signed ours, they were still paying theirs?
Oh, yeah.
I thought we initiated a 10-year payment plan that year.
People didn't have a plan, they had to pay upfront.
Right.
They had to pay all upfront. So they weren't technically still paying an installment. They had to pay all of it upfront. You guys got, you were the first ones, you're right, to get the installment plan.
So you got a better deal?
You did.
If you were them.
And other people.
Yeah, I'm just looking at us.
Do you want us to go back to them and renegotiate with them?
No, I'm just looking at us, we're around the same deal as the other business, and you guys renegotiated for them, and they had the same clauses I had. That's it.
We did renegotiate with them, that's what we're saying. So, but that's where we agree to disagree. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I would actually like to suggest that next time something is on the agenda, if the party is not here, that we do not vote until the party is here.
That's fine.
Because if they weren't notified...
They said they didn't get my email, and that's fine, it's not the first time.
We asked for the email. We asked for you to forward the email. You said you deleted it.
No, because I do that to all my emails, basically, but I, again, not, I apologize, but you, I talked to Mike before and told him one would probably be on, but I didn't, I sent it. You said you didn't get it. I apologize for that. I don't know what else I could do.
So that's where we are.
Right.
So thank you for coming in.
Mr. Knapp has entered the room.
Mr. Knapp, come on up. We were waiting for you. That's okay. We figure, maybe you, maybe you forgot how to get to City Hall.
I don't have an excuse.
Even though you're the former mayor, councilmember...
No matter how hard I try, I have nothing, no excuse. If I may, pass these out. By the way, thank you for allowing me this time.
Sure.
We'll just pass them down, Roger. We can pass them down.
There's not a lot I wanted to say about that. I think it's kind of, it's about the trail. A lot of people, a lot of bikers and things use that trail going up, you can go up through Romeo, and there's many places to stop on there. It'll tell you all those things that are out there. Most, I was looking, even in your lobby, there's a book in there that says, that has all the trails in Michigan in it. Most of them are paved. And I'm not talking about any of the other trails, just that two-mile section where the Paint Creek Tail ends, and then Dequinda Road starts, a paved trail that goes all the way through and continues on through Romeo. And the rest of it's self-explanatory, and I think if you look at it and consider it, that's about all I would ask. And then, secondly, if anybody besides me, where we live, that slogan that we have for Rochester, where we live, I really, I don't understand that slogan, but for years, we were the heart of the hills. I don't know any other town around that has the hills that Rochester had, so I thought it was, it was always such a great slogan. Is that called a slogan, by the way?
Tagline.
Tagline.
Okay.
It's called a monkey.
But anyway, other people, I think there are people, probably old people like me, that remember that. And it's, the biggest part is, I thought it explained what Rochester is. I mean, you can't ride, if you ride a bike, or you'll know how many hills are around here, and they're, it's really hard to get out of Rochester without riding up a hill. So, and I can't think of another town anywhere around that has hills as we had. So I thought it was a great slogan. Maybe sometime you can consider that. Anyway, that's all I would ask. Go ahead.
I'll say something.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, when I talked to Roger, we talked about the bike trail, and I honestly remember back when Mr. Vetrano was here, we had a discussion about why we didn't surface that. And we, and at that time, the council and some folks were like, ah, just leave that like it is. But it's gotten worse, it's dusty, it's tough to maintain. With a lot of the water that comes by the hawkes and stuff, it's not as nice as Paint Creek Trail, when we scrape, and the guy spent a lot of time there. So I told them that maybe we could take this to the grant committee and see if we could find a way to find somebody, because we did pave from Elizabeth all the way around when we relocated it to the Suade property, that is paved up to diversion. So we wouldn't be breaking any rule, it's just that one gap, like Mr. Knapp says, of two miles, that's kind of dusty and nasty. So we'd be glad to take it to the grant committee and see if we could find something, if you'd like.
Mayor Proton.
Yeah, so thinking about that from a grant committee, there's two ways to approach it, is maybe there's something we can do with the water runoff, so it doesn't get as much, and I know there are a number of grants in terms of water, so maybe from a water standpoint. My only concern with paving it, and I do use the trails all the time, like you, I'm a biker, I love trails, I think bikes belong on the trails, not on the roads. And so, but when we pave it, then we got to deal with the maintenance. So I don't know where the trade-off is on that as well. If we got a grant to pave it, then we probably need a grant to maintain it, too.
Mr. Mayor, secondly, on the logo, I thought what council might want is, I know when we went to the new slogan, if you will, tagline, we came up with the cost to re, councilwoman Peterson called me and asked me that, I think, right, that we talked about what would it cost to retrodue our cards and our shirts and our trucks and everything. So if you'd like me to gather that information for you, I'd be glad to do that, and we could give you an estimate what it might cost.
Last time, like $10,000?
I think it was more than that.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes. Being, this is my background, I would like to compliment the company that created the logo, but the tagline was a bit problematic, because it has to be explained. And I, from a, my, being a logo designer and tagline designer, I would agree with you that if you have to explain a tagline, then it needs to be thought, maybe, maybe more intentional. And I would say, if this was ever going to be, what I've told my clients, is then when you create the new cards, you start integrating the new logo or no tagline, I mean, the new tagline or no tagline, but you just start dropping it out, not replacing everything at once. And I'm not sure how it was created, I'm sure it had a committee, I'm sure people got together, I don't know if there was focus groups, but yeah, that would be my opinion.
It was created by former councilmember Jill Vannelli's firm.
Okay.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we ever talked to the Clinton River Trail Commission regarding paving that section?
There's a Clinton River watershed, and then a...
That's the one that handles the trail.
Clinton River watershed, but there's really friends of the Clinton railways, and same thing, they don't have money. But I support, if we got their support in a grant application, I think that could help.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two things, one, thanks for bringing that up. I do know that Rochester Hills does the other part of the trail, going into Auburn Hills, and it is nicer to ride on.
That's all Rochester?
No, I, yeah, and the hills over there, off, from Crooks all the way into Auburn Hills. So it would be nice if we could do that, and I do know, too, that there are grants for that, especially now for parks, et cetera. And thank you for bringing up about the logo. I, too, think that it needs to be changed to represent the first, somehow represent it better for what we are here as the first settlement in Oakland County as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Oh, I'm sorry.
Member Trent?
Well, just to define, logo versus tagline. The logo, I think, is very well executed, very high quality. I'm sorry that I'm critiquing our former councilman, but in my opinion, yes, the tagline could, should be revisited.
It really doesn't represent the logo at all.
Or the town, right.
So maybe city administration can bring us maybe some framework to take a look at it?
Okay.
Maybe goals and objectives, maybe something to take a look at it. Anything else, Mr. Knapp?
Not unless you got a couple hours. Just kidding. Thank you for your time. Sorry about being late.
No problem. Good to see you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for continuing to serve, too.
Okay. Next on to the approval of the minutes, consideration of meetings, the regular meeting of October 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Peterson. Support by councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. First is the consideration of a special event application from the PSD to hold the Lanyup and Big Bright Light Show event on November 21st, which is not that far away. And next is review of the current 2022 event calendar.
Motion to approve the Lanyup?
Support.
Motion by councilmember Albrecht, support by councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. We can now have Christmas.
We didn't vote down Christmas.
There is no old business or table items, there's not a public hearing, legislative deliberation. Onto reports for regular business. First is a consideration of a report and recommendation to opt out of Public Act 152. Our human resource director, Jo Ellen, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is something we do every year. We are obligated to do it based on our union contracts, so it has to go before council as part of a resolution, and has to be voted on by the majority for it to pass. So I just presented everything to you, gave you a little background. I know I've added a few little things on the memo, but my experience is better if you give them, everyone, more information, and they know, can make a good decision. So the suggested council action is just to adopt the attached resolution to opt out of Public Act 152, and that gives us the ability to not be committed to an 80/20 this year, only because we don't really have the option, so.
Mayor Proton, Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you for the information, and I know we're going to talk a lot more about healthcare, but I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution to opt out of Public Act 152 and honor the city's contractual obligation of a 5% healthcare cost share by the employees.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Proton, support by councilmember Peterson, discussion on this? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, with administration input, we would like to move, administration would like to move item C to B. So we're going to receive the quarterly financial report first, and then that will talk about why we need to look at all of our Blue Cross stuff. So, city treasurer, Maggio, welcome.
Thank you, Council.
And thank you for your work on Comcast.
Yes, we are definitely, I was very happy to see that on the TV in here, we could see the picture and hear it, and it's only going to keep getting better as they finish the config, but it is now at least streaming, so we have got a win under our belt. Sorry, I forgot to open this before, like I usually do. And see, all right, quarterly report, one big topic, obviously the focus of tonight, and that's why I wanted to place more emphasis on that than anything else, is the amendment that we're looking at. So as we're looking at the healthcare, and that's, that's the big change for this one, and we're looking at what do the impacts mean, both for the plans, the options for which one to take, and then the, kind of the component that ties to it is what happens in the budget by taking these plans. So we have a set amount of money set aside that we had projected in the multi-year budget over years to say, okay, here's kind of maybe where we'll be, it'll be a rough idea. Then as we get to the renewal time, we get hard numbers. What are the trends? What have the costs actually been? What are they going to quote us at? And, and that's what we have tonight, is these two options that are in the green bar here, right in the middle. And the difference between the two, other than, they're both increases, we still have an increase to general fund on both, is that the, it's no change and continuing exactly as is, which is self-funded, we pay all the costs, the stop loss and all that, is going to be roughly $300,000 or so, just with the impact of this renewal and going forward. If there's another major increase in the next year, then this would be, that increase would be on top of what this increase would be. The thing that's a little different is that we currently are on a December 1 plan year, which means the way the renewal goes, seven twelfths of the renewal is in current budget year, and then July 1, we end up with five twelfths of the impact rolling forward into the next year. So that's why some of these are, you see them split like this, it's really just the two, and then the follow, flow forward for that third year, which, if there's zero change, then you would just end up with these amounts, and then what the renewal would be, would be on top of it. The proposals, the switch to the fully insured Blue Cross plan, and the reason this stays pretty minimal for, for the two years, and we'll get into more detail in the next agenda item, but mainly because Blue Cross underwriting informed Manquand Vance that switching to the fully insured, you're going to have an 18-month window before the trends start gaining a lot of traction. So we'd be able to ride essentially two plan years with a lower impact, which would be the difference between these two right here. So that extra amount, we would be able to save, save, not spend, you're going to, you're going to spend a little bit more, but you're going to save in comparison of just staying exactly where we're at. So just so council's aware of the impact, and then that amendment would be for the current year, 40, basically another $47,000 on general fund, $80,000 in the next, and $126 in the next year out. And then, as always, we keep monitoring it and updating as we go. So that's the main request and focus tonight. On the chart, of course, we're always aiming to keep above the, above zero. We always want to be, we always want to be above zero on that one. So as we're making the choices, we are within some rounding errors, basically, in our, in our $14 million budget. So we're still keeping things tight, we're still looking at costs as we always do, but we're still trending in, in a good direction, even though you see here it's slightly in the red for the next three. Here's the impact by the years. And then rolling forward, there's, there's no major, if council has any questions, we can dive into it. I do want to talk just real quick on the investments. I know that's always a topic of conversation. We are, the Sage advisory is working just the way it was supposed to be, supposed to be working. They're doing phenomenal. We're getting a much better return, about half a percent more than what I can get for us managing it solo. So even sourcing different returns and whether it's CDs, all the commercial paper, all those different things, they're still able to, to keep that outperforming. So as these CDs are expiring, that's part of that initial amount that's getting rolled into Sage, so just as they're coming due, they're being cashed out, and then, and then transferred over, over to them. And then in the multi-year, we haven't adjusted it yet, but the multi-year has in the fund right now, based on 3% for the long term. So we'll see, we're above 3% now, so there will be some additional gains just on the investments because we're above 3. But the 3 was, was thought to be a really good long-term goal, as they wanted to get back down to it at the, the last Fed report that, that I had read. So we're just keeping that at 3, and that's where we're kind of rolling right now and aiming for. Sorry, I didn't mean to zoom out so much. Some of these percents, as usual, this usually comes up each year, it's just the timing on when we do disbursements, like to the library, they have two a year, Ra-Ra is two a year, so when we have two library payments before the amount, this quarterly comes up, it looks like we're overspending, but it's really just the, the timing for, on the contracts. And with that, I will turn that back over to Mayor, and if anyone has any questions, we can run through any of those.
There are any questions on this before we get our consultants to talk about our issues?
Okay, let me just say one.
Mayor Proton?
So just one comment, great work, finance director, Maggio, on the yields. I did review that Sage advisory performance, thank you for letting me look at that. You know, the yield to maturity there is 4%, and so forecasting 3% is good and conservative, but our yield should, should be looking better, and with the six-month treasury above 4... but our yield should be looking better, and with the six-month Treasury above 4, and the one-year Treasury above 4, and the two-year Treasury above 4, 4 seems to be like the new number right now. So some more good income coming in for the city, so thank you.
4 is the new 2?
4 is the new 2.
4 is the new 2.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Jo Ellen and Anthony Marcy and Mark and his team at our consultants, because this was not a fun task. They jumped on it really fast. Thank you, Blue Cross, for stepping up, we did not see that coming, and it was at the last second, and I know you guys worked them hard. And if I could understand it, they explained it to me at the lowest level possible, so I could get comfortable with it, so I could be comfortable talking to you folks, and the fact that Blue Cross levels things out, et cetera. So we, this is like the short-term fix, and I committed before, because our team committed to, then we're going to look at other ways to flatten that curb past year two, right? The drug plans, and with the union negotiations being open, full transparency, we'll work together to do that. But this was so, such good news last week, that it wasn't $500,000 or $600,000 in six months. So I appreciate everybody's efforts, and we're not done, we have lots of work to do as we go through preparing the budget, but I just wanted to let everybody know that these guys worked really hard on that and appreciated it.
Yeah, thank you, and so I would, if you want to come up, I guess maybe you can give us the Reader's Digest version, but how did we get to the potential problem? Where did that come from?
I don't know if you need it, this was the one that we had for the packet, and we have the handout.
And then, and then where was the, and then the solution? Councilmember Sage?
I guess before we go into this next discussion, do we need to make a motion to approve as presented?
I don't think we can until we determine the second.
Did the 80/20, is that what you're saying?
That was already approved.
Yeah, the amendment, I guess it would make, at some point, either now or after the presentation, because if we go with the recommendation, then the amendment request would be to adopt that one for the, with the change. So we can do that right after.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Jo Ellen, do you want to lead in?
Oh my God, who's that? I know. And we had a couple other slides, I don't know if we have those lined up.
Yep, they're here.
The last two.
Yep, they're right here.
You have them.
Got you. Okay, so this is all that's in here, is this one here, there's these slides.
Okay, so, thank you, Council. Again, we will keep it pretty high level. Yeah, I've been in front of this council a few years now, and we've talked about healthcare a number of years. This was probably the first year where we had probably everything that could go wrong did go wrong, and that's what is the risk with self-funded contract. You have a couple slides in front of you that provide kind of the, and I don't think they're up there to shine, those two slides that we provided you that have the historical trend of the city, and this is a graph that you've seen before, because we kind of build on it every year, so it should look like this right here?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay, so anyway, there's a couple bars here, and the other slide we provided you kind of explain the different types of contracts that Blue Cross offers in the marketplace. And I think it's important to understand that, because we throw the term around self-funded, fully insured, and it sounds simple, but there's a couple versions of those type of contracts. A self-funded contract, yes, it is self-funded, but you protect yourself against stop loss, and you've heard that conversation over the last several years, whether we talk about Jefferson Health Plan, Blue Cross, it doesn't really matter who the carrier is, but the form of the contract, when you're self-funded, is you are subject to claim exposure up to a certain dollar amount, usually either per contract or per member.
Right, can I, and I believe, speaking, I believe that we all thought we were covered with.
And you have been.
Well, okay, it didn't sound like we were, though. So that's what we want to hear.
Yeah, and you, so you have been, it's just the claims were so catastrophic, that if your stop loss was at $125,000 a year, per member, right? So for per member, you are exposed up to $125,000. In the past, you had maybe one or two claims that went up to that stop loss limit, every dollar after that $125,000 is covered by stop loss insurance. It just so happens, this year you had a number of different claims that went right up to that stop loss limit. So in the culmination of more claims hitting than standard or on average, created this uptick, and it happened to be on some medications that are chronic, which means they're not just once a year, once a month, these could go on for years, right? So that's what generated the additional expenditure this year. Yes, Council?
And Mark, the question I asked on the call was, I think where the mayor was going at the last city council meeting, there was some misunderstanding. We knew we had the individual stop loss, but we weren't sure if we had the aggregate, and that's why I asked the question on the call.
Yes.
And I think for the city council, we should just clarify, we did have the aggregate, which is sort of the nuclear bomb if everything goes wrong, which we didn't. We were told at the last meeting that we might not have that, and that was the concern we had at the city council. So based on your expertise, I wanted you to, you guys do a good job, I wanted you to make sure that we all knew that we had both the specific stop loss, which is per member, and the aggregate, which is for the overall plan.
Yeah, the aggregate insurance you do have, now the claim, even as high as your claims were, you did not hit that aggregate. It's very difficult to hit the aggregate, because the insurance carriers are building up enough of a cushion that you'd almost have to have a catastrophic event in the community, even worse than COVID, to ever hit that.
But I guess I thought that the coverage wasn't nuclear, it was lower than it turned out to be.
So because you have the specific stop loss, what that does is it limits each individual person that's enrolled in the plan, but anything, any claim that breaches that level no longer contributes toward meeting your aggregate deductible. So if you're limited at $125,000, as the city is currently per person, you only can credit $125,000 for each person who hits towards meeting your aggregate limit.
And I understand all that, I guess, you know, there's some, and I'll stop here in a minute, but I guess, you know, it's one drug that, it's one experimental drug we keep talking about, but to me, you're going to have experimental drugs, you're going to have the next one and the next one. So I guess I'm surprised that it seems like, oh wow, we're so shocked by an experimental drug, where to me, we could have or should have been aware of that, or been expecting that. That's my, I guess my question to you or comment.
And it's not just one medication, it's the number of the high-cost claims. As you can see by this graph, and this is actually representative of a lot of our groups, where if you see the two lines between what a fully insured contract, what the run rate looks like, you know, self-funding typically, over a five- to seven-year period, will nine times out of 10 outperform any fully insured contract. You know, I've been doing this for 20 years, I've only had two groups move away from self-funding with the stop loss protections to a fully insured contract for groups, you know, your size to a couple hundred lives. So it's not usual that you have a number, the number of claims between medications and medical procedures in one year, but the good news is, because we're following it, you can always jump ship, and that's kind of what we're doing here. You can jump ship when things look like, well, you know what, we've been saving for years, but now we've had two or three years where it just, you know, based on the demographics of your group, this is not the right place for you. So we're jumping off to avoid, you know, taking the hit, you know, going not only next year, but the year after. So that's why we look at this every year, you know, for some groups, you may never, you may not come back, go back to self-funding, because you've seen the worst of the worst, right? But that's, every council will have that, make that decision, because you'll see up to, up until this year, you had cumulative savings for a number of years, and usually when you have a bad year, you have one bad year, this, you've had two bad years, which got you to the level where we saw a jumping off point. So I'll stop there. Is there any questions? I'll have John go through what we, what Anthony kind of presented at a real high level of that jump off point, and what that means as far as financially keeping costs down and avoiding those high costs, high costs that we were originally projecting going into next year.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Kowalski, I work with Mark at Manquan Vance. The first page that you have in front of you with the bar chart on it, that's just the very high-level explanation of the different types of insurance contract that you could have. On the far right, that's called community rated, it's only available to small groups that are under 50 contracts, so it's something that's only there for groups that are smaller than the city. The middle column involves a blending of risk between your actual claims and, in our case, Blue Cross's fully insured pool, which takes everyone that's fully insured with Blue Cross in the state of Michigan, and looks at more of an average over a much larger group, to see how they expect claims to perform more statistically, rather than, you know, one group having very large claims, and we would consider that a shock, right? A shock claim, or something that breaches stop loss, right? Those are not the norm, they don't happen everywhere all the time. So if you're in this middle column where you're experience rated, we'll call it, you, your rates are impacted by your own claims and your own group's claims, but they are softened by the greater pool, fully insured pool at Blue Cross. And that helps to protect some of the, some of the groups really in your size range of not quite 100, but not small enough to be fully community rated. And the, you get some advantages, being experience rated, or ERS for short, where in good years, your claims are better than the pool is running, and so you won't really take big increases there. It'll typically be small, single digits as administrative costs with the carrier rise. But in years where you don't perform well, where your claims are coming in much higher than the pool, you'll have credibility adjustments that'll bring your costs, your expected costs, which goes into developing your premium rates, down. And that's where we're seeing things come in today. Your current contract is the far right, self-funded with stop loss, that Mark already explained. You are paying administrative fees to Blue Cross, you're paying stop loss premium to Jefferson for the specific and aggregate, and then you're paying the claims, all the claims as they come in. And this type of contract does give you the greatest amount of flexibility, however, there's added risk that we're seeing in the large dollars that we're seeing.
Let me also step in, for those of you on the council for the last couple of years, just a way of comparison, the Jefferson Health Plan reviews that we had over the last couple of years, that contract was kind of a blend as well, where very similar to what we're talking about moving to today with Blue Cross, it was one of those pooled arrangements where a percentage of your claims, around 50%, would have impacted your rates, and then the other 50% represents the whole pool, which is really, for a group your size, a pooling arrangement is probably the most favorable. You don't get 100% in the good years, right? So in the good years where your claims are low, you're not capturing 100% of that savings, but in the bad years, you're also not capturing 100% of the losses. So the pool arrangements, we feel are probably the best for smaller groups, whether it be the Jefferson model, whether it be this model that Blue Cross offers, and we've been comparing those two for the last several years. I think this was, you know, this was a red flag, right? That this is the year to do it, because for years we've been talking about it, but now we're kind of forced into it, and I think it's a good thing that we get into a model that's probably going to protect you long-term.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So you stated that it was the past, this is the second year, basically, so was there any indication last year that we should have looked at this?
The, those large claims that we talked about earlier happened right after last year's renewal, that the drug claims started to hit, one hit, and then the one, and the second one followed, so we saw other, we saw some medical claims going up last year, but we didn't see the catastrophic claims hitting until the early part of this most current renewal year.
Yeah, our particular, largest impacting factor to the increase that we're seeing or would be seeing if we don't make a change here, is something that, as Mark said, it began in the second half of the experience period that went into last year's renewal, and there really was no way to predict that a second person would come on. It's such a rare incidence that we expected one person to continue, but when a second came on at the very beginning, right after we looked at the data to compare the renewal last year, that was unexpected and unforeseeable.
So there was no way at that point in time to change anything, correct? You have to wait out the timeframe? Okay, so that's just wrong, but I just, we're not, from what I understand, from what we was presented with or told, as to why we did the self-funded, that was, you know, we were going to save, you know, really, however, it wasn't, and it has nothing to do with you, but it was not ever posed to us in the event, what would happen to the city if we had catastrophic claims, and how much it would end up costing. And that wasn't, that was not something on you, but it was not presented fully that way to us to really see how bad the risks are, because to me, healthcare today, there's a huge risk no matter who it is now, and I would just, I would just like to have had the city been made more aware of that ahead of time, and I don't know if it's the way things come in, because I know they have so many days to pay or not, you know, I mean, to make those claims and get them, but I would like to see us really stay, stay within that threshold of being fully insured and having that information given to us sooner rather than later, no matter how it can be presented, if there's any red flags at that time, because to me, the little bit of savings that we have had is already gone, I mean, because we've really spent a lot of that just in two years' time.
So, question, so if we go to Blue Cross, and then there's three new catastrophic claims, are we covered?
If there were to be, you know, three additional, so now you're up to, say, six catastrophic claims, you're still going to pay the same amount for the entire plan year, because they're fully insured premium rates. Now, there'll be some impact at renewal time.
Sure.
But as Anthony mentioned, we've had some further discussion with his team there at the city, and the way that the fully insured, moving into a new fully insured contract with Blue Cross works, is that when your first renewal is being developed, they do not have a complete 12-month experience period to use to develop those rates. So they will give you their book trend for your first renewal, that typically comes in 10% or lower. And until they have a full 12-month period, which would be at the end of year two going into year three, you won't see the full impact of the catastrophic claims. And so, as Nick mentioned, we are not going to stop looking for alternative solutions to help mitigate our particular prescription problems, but for the next couple of years, we'll be able to take advantage of being pooled with Blue Cross if you choose to move forward in that direction. And it gives us quite an ample opportunity to find an alternative solution, or say, maybe a new drug comes out that can be used, or the one that's being taken comes off patent and becomes generic and now is far less expensive, right? What we have heard from some of our pharmacy programs, that a very similar medication is losing patents next year. medication is losing patents next year.
Yes.
And that may be something that we can pursue in, in an alternative pharmacy solution for, for individuals who have this need that would eliminate the specialty medication and turn it into potentially a generic.
Does, and this is maybe a question for Joel. And does, in our union contract, if there's a generic, do they have to take that? What if the employee says, I'm good with right where I am? How, how does that work? Or is that not in your?
They're not obligated, but with Blue Cross, they have a team of pharmacists that work with, they're called clinical pharmacists, that work with the employee directly. So there's no HIPAA violation. And they're also highly motivated to get these drugs off of the specialty onto a more generic. So, or even into some of these pharma programs that, that offer manufacturing assistance. So right now, that particular drug does not. But this will buy us a little bit of time, two years, for us and Mancom Vance to work with these companies and then potentially with these individuals to, to steer them into a different program.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. Blue Cross, they don't, they won't ask the group, but they will have programs in place through their pharmacy plans that automatically look at other therapeutic alternatives as well as generics. It's just when these new, this is a newer, there's a lot of newer drugs, someone mentioned it earlier, there are a lot of newer drugs hitting the market. And if it's the only brand drug available treating certain ailment, that will be prescribed even after they would have gone through the review to look to see if there was a generic or some combination of other medications that could treat the same ailment. So Blue Cross behind the scenes is always doing that because again, they have an incentive because they have this huge pool. And the more they can steer towards lower cost alternatives, the better the pool runs and the better it is for their clients. So they have an incentive as we have an incentive, as, as you have an incentive, to continue to look at alternative therapies.
Councilmember Albrecht, I'm sorry.
I just, I wanted to add one more thing. I'm not sure if I answered your question completely, Mayor. But when we work with the unions in our, our contract negotiations, one of the things that we're hoping to gain is to have them partner with us, to have their employees buy into this alternative program. So that a, a lot of times, it might be a little bit more at the onset to get involved in these programs because they have to give them information about their income or whatever it is. However, if we can have a partnership with our employees in the unions to work together, it's going to improve our costs, it's going to improve the cost to the employees. And that's, I know, very critical because of the way our economy is, that if we can all work together and say, look, we all buy into this, we will, you know, take part in this program, then it will be successful.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thanks, Mayor. Question for either John or Mark, and I didn't ask this on our call last week. We're, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're currently under the self-insured under a three-tier RX program.
Yes, so there's a generic, a brand and a specialty.
And I, and I had started and I didn't, didn't ask it on the call. Under the new one, are we going to a five-tier program, you know, where you have the additional ones, the, you know?
The five-tier. We did not have it quoted that way because we didn't want to violate anything with the union agreements. So the current proposals for fully insured rates are to match the existing coverage to, to a T.
Okay.
Councilmember Peterson?
Go ahead. Sorry, I'm not good at sitting still. Going forward, that's something we can definitely negotiate into our, our contracts. But we, we don't want to change and make it anything different, or it still has to be comparable.
And I, and I'm respectful of the, of the union negotiations that we'll have going on. But in, in the spirit of what you're talking about, you know, whilst working together, the five-tier program would be very beneficial not only for city costs, but for the employees because it helps you manage, you know, these, these drugs that, you know, you get into the third tier, which would be the fifth tier. They're, they're, like the drugs we're talking about are prohibitively costed. And, and there's better management by the pharmacy managers under those five-tier programs than the three-tier. But I understand the answer to the question. I respect that. I just hadn't asked that on the phone call.
No, that's, that's a good point. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Anything further? Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I really like what Jo Ellen said about talking to everyone, about the benefits for everyone working together, because this has got some issues that are, you know, need to be figured out with the unions and the health of the, of the employees and the type of drugs they're getting. And, you know, and then with Blue Cross Blue Shield being fully insured, part of the extra payments that we pay are to get their expertise, to negotiate and to figure out with pharmacists, is this, is there, are there drugs that are comparable with, with experts? Not just, we're looking for something that's less expensive. So, because that's all I got to say. But yeah, I think it's a good idea.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah, a couple more questions if I may. Thank you. So I just want to make sure before we vote or anything. So under the fully insured, does that mean that, is there a cap? Is there anything that, where we're going to hit, hit a delta that is going to end up being a surprise later on down the road? Say we end up with 10, 15 employees with something or a larger number?
No, not in, not in any given year. So once the premium is set for the year, it will not be changed. You, you're, you're there and that's, you know, you have a fixed cost, whether it be for a single or two-person or family enrollment, you'll know every month what you're going to pay. You're not paying claims as they come in as you are today.
Right.
It's pure premium. And Blue Cross holds all the risk.
Okay, so then is this plan going to change the deductibles that family employees or any of the employees?
It will not. So part of this proposal was that we took the current benefit designs and had them matched, just simply changed the funding mechanism.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Albrecht. I just, again, I wanted to thank Jo Ellen and Anthony and you two, you know, when you took us through this, or took me through this on, on the call, it seems like a, a win-win for the city. I mean, we had talked about at the last council meeting to explore the fully insured route. And as I think I mentioned, what, I've taken two clients fully insured who were self-insured for, for similar reasons. So it's, you said you only have had two, you might have more coming down the road lately. So, but I also like the fact that Jo Ellen was really focused on our union employees. I mean, the, the rates are going to go up a tiny bit for, you know, the premiums are going to go up, which is just a normal, normal, normal factor of, of the cost. But the fact that all the employees are going to have the same plan, same carrier, you know, there's going to be no big changes in open enrollment. I think that goes a, a, a long, long way of this partnership we're talking about. And I, and I, and I hope, and I hope as, as people look at the minutes and, and listen to this, that we can work together with, with the unions to, to, you know, we're all in this together, you know, we're, we all need healthcare coverage. We all are, understand what's going on with inflation in all areas, not only, not only healthcare. So if we could work together and come up with some things where, you know, we're, 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 you know, at this, at the point right now, we're paying 95% of these costs, the city. And we've just gotten a presentation from Anthony that, you know, how much it's going to affect our general fund and everything else like that. So coming up with this, this plan that's not going to negatively impact our employees in any way, shape, manner, form, I think is, is, is a huge win. So I would make a motion to approve us moving to this fully insured model. I know you call it ES, ERS with Blue Cross. That was where I thought we should go a couple of weeks ago. And, and Jo Ellen, Anthony and you two, you know, pounded the pavements and the bushes and everything else and came up with some, some nice numbers here. So that'd be my motion.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Gould, Gould, excuse me.
Thank you, thank you. So thank you for the discussion and educating us on this. You know, healthcare costs are a significant cost, part of every entity's budget. And so this is an important decision. I, and it's important that we provide that coverage for our employees. I just wanted to clarify this awesome chart that I wish we could have up on the slide. And maybe if we could get this added to the council packet for the residents. So if I'm understanding this chart correctly, the gray line is what our fully insured cost would have been. And then the dark blue line is the self-insured. So the gap between those is a savings.
That's correct.
So we've had a savings every year since we've gone to self-insured.
Until this, this projected renewal.
Right. And what I call the break even, where the blue line crossed the gray line was at the end of 2022. So I heard you say two years, but I don't really see that as two years. I don't understand that.
So the, the two years when we say that, the, starting in the, the 2019, 2020 column of this graph, you'll start, it starts to climb drastically. And that's where we're saying two years. So you're 20, 20, 21.
So the trend, the trend was going in the wrong direction for two years.
Correct.
But from a pure cost standpoint, it crossed.
Cumulatively, you were still in the.
Ahead of the game.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that, it was closing the gap.
So going back to Councilmember Peterson's question is, shouldn't we have caught this earlier?
Unfortunately, with, without the ability to predict the future in, in claims and knowing someone's going to get sick before they do, it's, it's not really something that can be known.
Okay.
Yeah. Also, oh, there, the claims data as it comes into us to be analyzed, it is, it's not 90 days, but there is.
It's a gap.
A month or two lag, depending on which carrier it's coming from. So you don't even see things in real time.
Right.
They have to come in, be processed. And so the last data that we were able to provide in mid-October on the way the plan is running was for September claims. And that's claims that were paid in September. Typical lag for a medical plan is a couple of months. So the member goes, seeks services, and then those services have to be billed for, processed, discounted, all of those things. And then we pay them. And then a month after that, we get the reporting that shows us all of it to look at. So there is a, there's a significant amount of time where things have to tail out before we can really analyze them.
I understand. So makes sense. It was, it's the right time to make this change.
Yeah, I think if you look at those lines too, it is a good graph because it does show that the first couple of years, you see year one kind of a nice and flat. Year two actually spiked up a little bit.
But nothing.
But then the year after flattened out again. It's usually, you'll, you'll see the up and down. But then the, really the last, you know, from 1920 and then 20 to 21, and then we're forecasting 22 to 23, that would have been three years. I just know with most of my groups, we don't, we don't, we've never, except one other time, did I see three years in a row of a trajectory like this. So it usually does flatten out over time. But we are, we are in different times and you're, you're a smaller group. So I do understand, fully insurance is very appealing when you've been hit like this for three years in a row, you know? And there's, and we were hoping that in the marketplace that there's other pooling arrangements. There are other pooling arrangements that are out there that provide a little bit more advantage to you as a, as a plan sponsor, where you get to keep some of your positive reserves. The Blue Cross arrangement is not that. If you have a good year, Blue Cross keeps the money. Other pooling arrangements, you have good and bad years. If you're net positive, you get to keep the money in your own reserve. So there are different arrangements out there that could be more beneficial in the future, and that's what we're out here to kind of look at every year.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I just, Mike, 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 I got elbowed here that I didn't make a full motion. I should have read Jo Ellen's motion. So just want to amend my motion to say, I also recommend keeping and renewing vision dental life and disability coverages with Sun Life and approving the seven eligible part-time employees for either opt-out or the same Blue Cross Blue Shield plan with cost sharing that we have presented. So I just wanted to amend my motion.
Councilmember Gould, are you good with him?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. So question, back to this Blue Cross Blue Shield pool. Is this just, is this the whole pool that they have? So in this pool are other people who have high catastrophic and everything? This is like everything?
So the pooling that's, that's going to help to soften the city's costs is every fully insured member that Blue Cross carries in the state of Michigan.
Okay.
So we're talking tens of thousands.
No, that's, and I just wanted to make sure. So we know that it's not going to just change, just more people, if more people join as fully insured, then it's just going to make the pool better.
In most, in most instances, the larger the pool is, the better it is for everyone, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Savia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So thank you two guys very much for your work. Thank you to Anthony.
Lot of hard work.
I just want to say also thank you to Jo Ellen. I had stopped, I had stopped by City Hall and parked myself in her office and said, you need to please fix this. And it sounds like, it sounds like a pretty good fix. So thank you for that.
Very quickly, too.
Mayor, just one minute follow-up with that plan, if we could do the.
As a follow-up, I will make a motion to receive the treasurer's report as presented.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Savia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Job well done. Next is a consideration of a resolution adopting the annual master fee schedule update. I think we get Marcy for the next two items here. Marcy, welcome.
Thank you. I can't get here. Oh, you did? No, it's the Chrome one. I don't know what's happening. Dallas one, yeah. Yeah, there you go. Oh, but no. Hmm, okay. I had mine. Let's see. Wait a second. Let me, uh, okay. I'll just start. It should be on the actual thing. Okay, so, don't mind us, tag teaming as usual. So tonight, we're bringing forth the master fee schedule annually as part of the budget process. We come before City Council and we present different fees that need adjustments. So since 2018, we prepared a cumulative, a cumulative fee schedule. We call it the master fee schedule. And we look at it. It's just important for us to review the costs that the city incurs for the services and goods that we provide. So tonight, we're asking for some changes to the building department's fees, the park reservation. We're now renting the lion shelter. So we needed to include that on the master fee schedule. And the DPW has brought forth a few requests. Water meter pass-through cost change every year. So we want to reflect that in, in the pass-through recommended cost structure. And so if you have any questions on any specific item, I'd be glad to address that with you. There's about 30, 30 some odd fees that we are proposing changes of. I'm here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. So the lion shelter, just like with the other shelter, I don't like that there's a $50 delta between a resident and a non-resident. I think that's not fair to residents. Should be a different delta. Just my comment. We don't have to go into that. I'm, that, the window permit fee, okay. Can we have a door permit fee too added to this? And a garage door fee? And I'm just being sarcastic. I don't like that fee. I think that that fee is, does not take into account. I know it's a safety concern for certain windows. I know, you can. However, there are, doors are the same thing. Doors should have to be a certain type of door as well, depending on where they're going and how they're located. So I'd like to know why we are now going to ask for a permit for windows.
Mr. Mayor, I can help on that one. So we sat down and we talked at length with Marcy and, and Randy and Rose. And, and windows are totally different than doors, and here's why. In driving around to the sites, Randy sees a lot of windows being changed. Right now, you change a window. There's different kinds of windows for different kinds of circumstances. So his worry is if you put in a window because it's cheap and it's exit window or it's not tempered glass, you're putting life safety at, at threat. This isn't to make any money or make it very difficult. We had a long discussion. We had a long discussion at the committee about how many before that triggers that. And in Randy's opinion, it was one wrong window put in that you can't get out of because he's there to protect the people, not to gain the $5 or whatever the fee is. So for him, it was unconscionable not to make sure that we are watching windows in bedrooms and bathrooms. He sees windows going into places that they should not be in because the salesperson is going to sell you a window. And this is all about safety for him. That's where it came from. In his other communities that he's been in, they always had this to protect the people from the contractor selling them the windows.
So if I could just tag on to exactly what Nick said. This past week, we had a contractor come in and Randy had saw, he saw that the windows were being replaced. So during his regular inspection, building inspection, he went in and in the bathroom, there were two windows in the bathroom, one of which was tempered. He saw that they had the symbol of the tempered glass. The other was above the bathtub. It had no symbol. So the homeowner came in because it failed inspection. The homeowner came in and was so appreciative of the building inspector for catching that because it is, that's the protective services that the the city is providing with with Randy's work. So this is a real life example. We, we're not trying to nickel and dime the community. Our purpose really is public safety. It's the protective service. And that's, and that's why we're proposing the window permit.
Okay, can I follow up?
Peterson.
Thank you. So I guess my concern though is, is, okay, so is this on a new, new construction? Or is it a remodel?
He'll catch new construction with the building permit.
Right, right.
It's with a remodel or a renovation.
Okay, so why, this, this would actually go back on the contractor then for putting in not well, cheaping out and putting in something that's not tempered?
They, that, this particular instance, the supplier sent the wrong window. They sent two exact measurements of the same window because it was going in the bathroom. One was tempered glass, the other was not.
Okay, so then the contractor didn't catch it because it's not normal to have most, most glass today for a home is tempered. It's not something that you're going to find on tempered glass. I mean, I lived through an incident many years ago by just opening a screen door that didn't have it. So that's why I brought up the doors. It didn't have it either. And, you know, I ended up with glass.
It's dangerous.
Yes, it is.
It's very dangerous. And if I could, can I take back, can I go back to the lion shelter and why there's the differential between Rochester Hills or Rochester and non-Rochester residents? We're not alone in in offering to our, our residents a, a less expensive price for the rentals. Rochester Hills does it as well. When you rent their facilities, they also have a different rate for residents versus non-residents. So we're just kind of, we're examining the market and we're trying to price accordingly. And our parks are being maintained and, and uptake, upkeep is, is provided with tax dollars. So we get our tax dollars from our residents. We're already taxing them for that. So for the people that aren't supporting the parks with the tax dollars, we're charging a little bit of a premium is the thought process.
Oh, no, no. And I'm okay with that. I'm talking about, I, I think that we're charging way too much for our residents. And it should be more on the other side. But my other question is, how, how many people have we had utilizing the other pavilion since we don't have, didn't have this one ready yet? That are out of the area? Because I've had residents concerned that we are charging so much for a resident when we're already, you know, paying taxes.
So I don't have the Kiwanis rentals right now, but I know that from summer until the, till it gets too cold.
Right.
We usually have that fully booked. We've actually expanded it during COVID time. We only had it rented one time per day. So now we've, are expanding that and we're trying to block it so that we can get more people to utilize the space a little bit better. If you're asking about the, the lion shelter, we have had four reservations since we opened that up. The first reservation was Sunday, was a 90-year-old birthday party. Then the next two that we have are one-year-old birthday parties. And the fourth is a special ability, abilities dance that's being held in December. So it's a wide variety of usage. And I think, and the, the 90-year-old is from Rochester Hills. So they really had a great time. I spoke with them today. So we're, we want to get the word out about the lion shelter being available for renting.
The special abilities dance is rah rah. It's our SCAMP program. So I was, yeah.
Right, okay. All right. So do we charge the same for the nonprofit then, if it's just?
Same. In this instance, it's the same.
Yep.
So if there are any other questions, maybe about the DPW proposed changes, or any of the other building?
Councilmember Trent.
I don't have a question, but I was going to say I was in the meeting when we discussed the windows and we did spend a lot of time talking about it. And I am fully convinced that I, that it's a good idea to, to give Randy that ability to be able to help and the backup, to be able to make those decisions and say, you know, you need to change this for your safety. It's not just a suggestion. It's, it's in our.
Right.
Master, our plans.
Mayor Protem, Savia.
Thank you. So I'm appreciative of the presentation and the detailed discussion on it. And I think from a master fee and finance committee standpoint, we've always tried to, you know, just update this every year. Update it for any costs that have changed within the city's structure, just to cover our costs. And I think that approach has, has been working well. I know there were a number of years where this was never touched. I also appreciate the input from Randy and some of the other new employees that have brought their wealth of experience and allowed us to update this and stay current with what other municipalities are doing. And so I think this is a good fee schedule as, as presented, you know, adding some things like the electric vehicle chargers, solar panels, it really updates our, our process. So I would make a motion to approve the master fee schedule as presented.
Motion by Mayor Protem, Savia.
I support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Further discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So then I would appreciate it next time if those that were part of those discussions were here to give the reason. Because this is another where all this discussion is taking place in a committee meeting and not before us. So, you know, to all of those who sit there, that's fine. However, I would like the people here to present us with those issues that they feel are necessary and, you know, and bring those forth to us. I think that is only fair.
Absolutely. We can make that happen.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Savia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is a consideration request to approve the updated project scorecard for utilization in the current fiscal year 2023 and the upcoming fiscal year 2024 budget years.
All right, so I'm going to scroll down into the packet with the updates. So we're constantly trying to improve our processes in, in the administration and, and in finance department. And one of them is the project scorecard. It's a, it's, it's constantly going to change as long as we've got it as part of our budget and our project request mechanism. It's important really as a kind of a uniform way for the department heads to present to City Council the asks for the discretionary spends. So what we have needed to do is to make public safety, the public safety portion of the public scorecard more readily accessible in the, in the point system, in the value outcome. So what we've done is just, just as public safety is an important part of the city council's core values, it's important, probably one of our number one tasks for the community is providing the safety. We hear how important it is to the public through conversations with them, through the community survey. So we want it to be a part of the asks for any, any project that we bring to council. And how the public, excuse me, the project scorecard works is a director that needs to have a spend, a project ask. It starts with, with staff. So staff vets the, the request. If it passes staff's, you know, we're pretty rigorous with it when it, when they, when someone comes and asks us for, you know, we believe that we need monies for this project. Then after it gets through staffs and gets a thumbs up from, from the directors, it goes to, to the city manager. City manager has to approve it before it comes before you seven. And you all decide whether or not those dollars are spent. So we want to make sure that your values, the public's values and our values are indicated in all of our asks. Kind of completes the circle of how we spend available dollars. So what we put in the project scorecard is a mechanism to show if this is going to support a public safety. It's either going to strengthen it, it's going to help enhance it, it's going to improve it. So for all of the asks that have that integral part of, of their project, they're going to get premium points for that. So for those projects, there will be 14 additional points put on the, the value outcome. And the value outcome will take the point total, divide it by the cost of the project, and then it will be ranked according to if there is money to, to spend for it. If there's not, we'll have a matrix where that could be on a list for the next dollar that can be sent. The next, the next available dollar. So we've put into place this premium point count for public safety on the, on the proposed scorecard. And we are showing how it would have impacted a project that came before you in the past. So I picked one of police chief's ballistic, ballistic shield requests. And I think he received only six points on that with the old card. With the new card with the premium value, he would have gotten a 20, which would have made it make sense because it made sense all along for that project to get the green light from council. It made sense to support the, the police chief's request, but the points didn't add up. So with this, with the public safety premium point, that one would have had a 20 point. And I think it would have made sense from A to Z for council to approve the project. When we look at another one, which was a water valve replacement, and it had scored eight points in the past with the old card with that public safety, because public safety isn't just a police request or a fire request. It can certainly be public, Department of Public Works request. There could be an argument made, because it's for water, there could be an argument made for it to be on a treasury side. But we have to explain how and why in the narrative. It's not just a given. And what our commitment to City Council and to the public is that it has to pass staff, it has to pass our city manager, and then it has to pass you. So that's the proposal and the proposed change to the project scorecard presented tonight.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, mayor. So I appreciate all the hard labor on this project scorecard. I'm still having an issue with the SWAT analysis on here because the SWAT still does not, you can't really use those for giving value to anything. All the other ones in your value section, I think is great. I know we've discussed this in the past many times. But when you do a SWAT, you know, you're supposed to take that information and go work with that for your, and upcoming goals and objectives, not in a scoring fashion that was presented to us quite a long time ago to use on a scorecard. I think that it could be easily updated to take those valuable things that are the strengths that you would want to have an added value and put them in the other valued areas to even give better numbers to these items when they come forward. But of course, this only goes through budget finance. And then, you know, that committee is the one who brings forth their thoughts on whether or not it's good. So it's really hard to change it once it comes here to council. But it should still be because this still doesn't, in the essence of a project scorecard, make sense when you're using items that you can't get scoring from.
Jeanne Gou.
Thank you, Marcy. And I know this has needed some updating. So as I understand it, the, you all will make a decision whether it's public safety related or not. And then you're going to add 16 points to whatever it is.
14, yeah.
14 points. Can you give me an example of some things that wouldn't be public safety related? Because I'm a creative guy. I can make a pretty good argument for most everything, probably.
So the Memorial Grove All Abilities Park, not safety. Not, it's not going to get 14 points for safety because it's, it is, or the bloodblow improvement. I mean, there could, you could put it in the narrative and say, I believe that this is going to improve the public safety. But it has, it would have to, like I, like I probably wouldn't give it my thumbs up when it is vetted by staff. You know, I'm just one of many, but I probably wouldn't give my vote on that one when it is, uh, oh, let's see. I'm trying to think of another one that has, so fire chiefs, CPAC air, air tanks. That would, that would be a public safety. So, um, help me, Anthony. I can't think of another project scorecard that has come recently. So. Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the police dispatch furniture, not public safety, although it, you know, you would have to stretch it very, very thin. And it's, it still isn't going to get all of our votes. So at least it won't get my vote. So it, it has to, it has to meet a certain, I think, a reasonable man's threshold. And I don't, I think that if it comes to you and it's marked as, if it's marked as public safety, you would inquire. Like, I don't know that that would get 14 points. And then it would be posed perhaps in a discussion with your fellow council members. And if it doesn't, then that scorecard would have to subtract out the premium points.
Just, just a follow-up question. Why so many points? 14 just is, it's gonna, it seems to me it's going to erase pretty much any other request. If it's not public safety, it's not getting funded.
So it, it, 14 is, was picked because that got it to the medium level. It got it to the, the point where it would be in the medium, in the red, yellow and green box. It gets it to the medium priority. It still isn't a slam dunk where it gets the green light at 15 or more. So that's, that's where it was picked.
Thank you.
Well, if I may, mayor, well, the problem had been in the past, we were passing things in the red because it was public safety. So that additional points, if it is true public safety, it's not going to end up coming to us if it's, doesn't meet the threshold and pass it through all of you at administration. So putting it to the 14, at least you know that it's for public safety. And then once you add on the additional benefits, it'll take you to where it would be a big green light to spend the money to do that, correct?
Correct. And we do have another mechanism. And it's, it was, it's not just, it's not an update from this time. But it, it's on the, the top part. You're not going to be able to see it on there. That's way too small. But if it's mandated, and if it's being mandated to us by the state, by the Fed, then you don't even have, it doesn't need any points. It just gets a narrative to explain what the ask is for, that it's a mandated request. The, the dollars that are necessary to move it forward are still going to be included. But it does not have to go through the, the value outcome part of the card.
Councilmember Trent.
Oh, yeah. So what you're saying is there are some things that aren't going to have public safety, but you're still going to need this, you're going to require, they're going to request the funds.
There's going to, my, my guess is there will be a lot that aren't public safety because, you know, ballistic shields is one that came up and fire, the fire air packs. But every other request that was brought before you was not a public safety request.
Okay, yeah. So this just kind of adds that additional.
Councilmember Peterson.
To that.
Yeah, this was to take care of police and fire and public, and, and, and public works when it came to public safety. That's why this one was changed to take care of those two because that's what we had asked for. So when ballistic shields come forth, we know that it is for the public safety of the employee.
For the public.
Or the public. I mean, it's both, but that's what they need though. So. But this was only for, to address the public, to address the police and fire and had, so they had their own as well, correct?
It wasn't the, we, there were a lot of different options that were under review. One was that each different department would have a different card. It's pretty cumbersome for, for people. And then there's overlap in a lot of our asks. It. It's both DPW and potentially police, or fire and police. So we'd like to keep a uniform, a single card, but have it work for the different roles that it needs to work for.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, and Mayor, remember, this is kind of an answer looking for a problem. We optioned that, we don't need this. We used to, the old way was write a narrative, have it make sense to staff, to city council, done. But we ran that by you a couple of months ago, and there's still value. Anthony said it in his interview, I remember. This wasn't perfect, but it still felt good because it was consistent. So we didn't want to throw the baby out the bathwater. We tried to, and I get 14 gets it to the minimum, so there was no perfect way to do this, but it seemed like the value in this document is still there, and we still have to do the backend work of convincing ourselves and council ultimately, you know, it's the right thing to do. But it took away the odd situation where we couldn't explain why we were at three points and it's a ballistic shield that we need. So we were just trying to fix it.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I just liked the discussion, and I think the scorecard provides the transparency that we espouse as a city and as a city council to our residents and taxpayers. And all of us up here, every time something has come up from the fire department or the police department, we go, we're not going to vote against this because it only has six points. Come to us with a solution. So this is the solution. Is it perfect? No. 14 points, we explained the rationale for that. And again, to me, this is, you know, to Councilmember Goule's point, if we can define, clearly define what is public safety and what is not public safety, then I think this is a valuable tool. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of this new scorecard with the additional points allocated for public safety.
I'll support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Trent. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, so can this be taken back to that committee then and administration and at least figure out a way to change the SWAT part of this to actually make sense then to where you can actually utilize it for scoring appropriately? Because if something's a weakness, it's never going to have a score there. None of these still, they still do not make sense logically for what a SWAT analysis is for. And to keep it on the scorecard does not give, doesn't help administration at all in making it run a little smoother when these asks come through.
Sure. I mean, I think we can certainly, we have our next meeting the first Friday in December. We can discuss it again at the committee level and see if we might be able to have some more ideas to bring forth, maybe discuss that at goals and objectives with the full council.
And I think that would be a great idea, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Goule.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. So is there consideration of the Metro Act permit application from 123 net? Marcy.
That's Zach.
Or it's city attorney?
I'll jump off here on it. So before city council is 123 net, they have approached the city. They actually have some lines in the city already. And when Director Mizikar was talking with them, there was a reason unbeknownst to anybody still here that they didn't have to go through the Metro Act permit process to get the initial lines in. But we did discuss it with them, and they were happy to put forth a Metro Act permit for what they want to do expansion-wise. For those who, we haven't seen one of these, and I think it was four years ago was the last Metro Act permit. There used to be a lot of contention between communication providers and municipalities about using the right-of-ways to put their stuff in. And they end up being litigation, this is regulated by the MPSC. And so after a lot of litigation, not involving Rochester, but just globally, the Metro Act was put into place. It says, you know, essentially if the provider submits the Metro Act forms and they comply with what they're required to do by their Metro Act, which is a statute, then the city shall approve. And I know we plug our nose because it's our right-of-way that we're told that we have to allow them to participate in. But that fight has already happened, and that didn't go well for some cities. So before you, that's a little background. So before you is the application, and I know Alec met with 123 net. If you look at the permit, there's an application, then a bilateral permit that's being requested to be approved tonight. We went through their submittal, and it appeared to be, and it was complete. I did some research about 123 net as far as where they, are they new or to the area, are they not? I mean, we've seen their signs, of course, but, you know, the Metro Act website had a number, like, it has a listing of all the permits that have been granted over the last couple of years, and they've been everywhere, our neighbors all around us, Auburn Hills, Rochester Hills was 2021, they came through and were approved. Their permit was, I believe it was to be, it was complete, and so we had that discussion. According to the Metro Act, the city has 45 days to approve it or reject it. I didn't see a reason to reject it on the format. I know that AEW and Director Mizikar had some concerns with, because they wanted to do their installations below ground, which normally we'd say, oh, good, it's below, you know. But apparently there's a fair amount of conflicts that they might be running into with other things that are already in the ground, in the path that they were looking at. So they did have a meeting regarding the concerns. And at this time, what, because there is a, we'll call it the shot clock that you have to respond by, which we wouldn't have another meeting before that expires. So the, I guess the compromise or the plan to move forward, they've been very cooperative with Director Mizikar on this, is my impression. And the idea was to approve the permit, because they have stuff in the city's ground already, and actually some aerial. And the actual detail on the new one, that they would have to, they would be continuing to work with Mr. Mizikar and AEW to make sure that whether it's above or below is appropriate for that particular area. And they've agreed, they gave a letter to the city saying, we understand that you granted the permit, we still have to come back and arm wrestle about construction details. And I think that's a very fair way to proceed. At this point, if council is satisfied, then the requested action would be to approve the bilateral right-of-way telecommunications permit and authorize a city clerk and city manager to execute the permit. The insurance, the certificate of good standing, the permit application and the permit form are all in their packet. And I am here, and I know that Director Mizikar, I don't know if you have anything to add at this point, but that was my report.
I think city attorney Kraut covered it pretty well. Councilmember Albrecht.
City Attorney Kraut, you said they put in the letter, you know, I saw the letter they sent, which was just a standard, here's the permit for approval. Where is it in writing that they will come back to us for the approval?
Yeah, so they did, I don't know if it made its way into the packet.
I'm just, we only see the September 26th one.
Sunday night, they sent it. So if I may, just go ahead and read what's going to be part of the file and the approval. We'll make sure the clerk has this as part of the approval. They did put on, letter had dated October 21, so just on Friday. It says, "To City of Rochester City Council and City Attorney, 123 net understands and agrees that the approval of the Metro Act and any revision or renewal of such does not constitute approval of any construction." And that was the key there. "All construction projects should and will be submitted to the Building Department for review and approval, and no construction will take place until all approved permits have been received by any and all municipalities having jurisdiction over any rights-of-way within the project limits."
I just wanted for public record that that did exist.
They did also state something similar in their application as well.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So did we receive a performance bond or a letter of credit?
No, we did not ask them for a performance bond. We kind of would like to, though. I believe in the past, I don't believe the city has required these. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we did not ask them for this.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, I don't know if the, if prior administration did that. I do know that in the, the reason for, or the purpose of that bond is solely, according to the statute, would be only solely to any restoration. If they disturb, you know, the area that they're building in, then that's what that would be covering. It's not anything like you shall, you know, drive this line. It's just purely restoration of area. So we did have that brief conversation, and I think that asking for a bond wouldn't be unusual, and we wouldn't be the first one probably to ask them for it.
I think we should ask for it.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yep, so the next thing was regarding that they should be the ones that control the establishment of the right-of-way fees as well. So they're the ones who are controlling that.
This, you mean the $500?
No, establishment of the reservation, so the Metro Act shall control the establishment of the right-of-way fees. The parties reserve their prospective rights regarding the nature and amount of any fees which may be charged by the municipality in connection with the public right-of-way.
That's right. So there is an application fee of $500, and they do have to pay a fee per foot, which is peanuts, to be honest, but that's all set for, and all permit fees, and they have to pay for all that, whatever it costs, whether it's a right-of-way permit fee, you know, all the permits that they have to get to do the work themselves, they absolutely have to pay for.
But it says they control the establishment of the right-of-way fees, though. I guess that's the question I have.
Can you tell me where you're looking?
Yes, it's at the bottom of page 10 or page 68 of the packet. It's number nine.
You said page 60 of the packet?
68 of the packet, yeah, or page 10 of their section of what they submitted.
I think our numbering is just a little off here. Let's see here. Yes, the Metro Act controls the establishment.
Maybe it's the Metro Act.
That's the statutory.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So they're the ones controlling the fees, not our fees, just their fees that they're charged.
So the Metro Act is the, so the statute controls what we can, like, and that's like the $500.
Right.
That's set. So they control, and then the linear foot, that's the ones that the Metro Act controls?
That they take care of, okay.
That's right.
I just wanted it clear that they're not dictating any of our fees.
They have no, they have no control over our fees.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
I'll support the motion, and I do think we should ask for the performance bond.
Yes.
Your pro temp, Salvia, with the agreement to ask for a performance bond.
Would that be listed as a condition for their construction permit?
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Goule.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, real quick, Mayor, so on Third Street, there is a bundle of wires hanging down in front of the house that was just demolished. Are those the wires that 123 net is bringing in? Because they're the new ones with the round thing in between. I just see, there's a, I took a picture of them.
I think that's the old Comcast line, actually.
No, 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 this is, these are the new lines that are being brought into the city.
They haven't started yet, so it wouldn't be them.
Someone else's line, then?
The construction plans only showed underground boring, so I didn't see any.
Yeah, it's a utility, I'm not sure which one, though.
All right, I'll send you the picture later, and you can figure it out.
Okay, next is receipt of the check registry. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, next receipt report from the various boards of the commission is a report from the Sister City Committee. Councilmember Albrecht, Goule, or Trent?
I'm going to do it this time. We met on Tuesday, October 11, which was our first meeting since June. We welcomed Marilyn to the Sister City Committee to replace Amanda, and we replaced one creative marketing person with another creative marketing person, so that was a good add to our committee. We then talked about this joint city councils dinner meeting, and after that meeting, both Marilyn went and spoke with Mayor Bixson, and then David Blair spoke to Ryan Deal, the president of the Rochester Hills City Council. We wanted to make sure this is really going to be a social gathering, it would be, you know, we'd have to have the Open Meetings Act. We talked about possibly doing it in Lanyup, and after discussion with both Ryan Deal and the mayor, that that was not a good night, which was, we all agree, that's fine. So our next meeting is December 6. We're going to look for a date in January, just to get together and break bread. There will be not any official, you know, workings going on there, but we felt that, you know, keeping the dialogue between the two cities going was a good thing. We then talked about really more Rochester Hills city art projects. We, as everyone knows, we have, you know, we did the mural in downtown, we did the Monarch Butterfly by the parking deck, and then with our most recently completed park building. So Rochester Hills has been a little bit behind in terms of that, so they were, really wanted to hear how we did it and how we funded those things. And they're looking to do some murals on possibly their park building in Innovation Hills or at some of their fire stations. So just a good sharing of good ideas. We then talked about communication. In previous meetings, I've taken the, our calendar that the chief puts together for us, and I make copies and bring up to the meetings so that we can sort of advertise all the great things that are happening in downtown Rochester, our park and everything else, and they've taken that back and shared that with their city council. But we had talked about possibly, you know, I know we have not done our newsletter in a while because of our short staffing, but they do a newsletter called The Hills Herald twice a year, probably about 20, 30 pages. It's truly like a newspaper, and each of the city council members are afforded an ability to write an article if they wish. So in the coming addition, they, a couple of the city council members are writing about the Sister City Committee and some of the things we've done together, including the Memorial Day Parade last year was a joint city council effort that really went over well. So I don't know, Nick, when we'll have a next newsletter on tap, but it might be something where we could, you know, cross-pollinate some ideas from Rochester Hills to here. And that was it, and our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 6.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority.
I have the microphone, so I'll keep going. So we met on October 12. I've always reported our year-to-date registrations, so our year-to-date registrations for 2022 through September were 8,306 versus last year at that time was 6,785, so over 1,500 additional reservations. And at some point in October, we were going to exceed total 2021 registrations for RAR activities. So that's going very well. Again, we're still not at the true pre-pandemic numbers, and a lot of that was impacted by the dance committee, or the dance function where we lost a lot of instructors, so we're slowly building that back up, and that's going to take some time. Those of you who had a chance to see the piano that was outside the Payne Creek Center for the Arts, that is now in RAR, we really thank them for, it was really the person who had donated to the Payne Creek Center for the Arts, asked if we'd want to have it in our lobby, and it is there, it looks beautiful. They will come and tune it occasionally, and it fits in nicely. The big news is, we did, we completed the sale of the building for $2.2 million. The proceeds from that sale, after paying off whatever expenses we had, were used to put a new roof on the facility, so we will no longer have buckets, we will probably have a bucket sale, because we had buckets. have a bucket sale, because we had buckets throughout the building when it rained or snowed. So there's a brand-new roof, and I took a tour of it. It's not just putting a roof. They had to put, like, steel plates, you know, this used to be a tool-and-dye factory, so they had to put steel plates in and then put the roof on top of it. It was amazing looking at it from the inside to see how much work they had to do. But that was done. And then those of you who've driven by that, it's now a different color. The color is salty dog blue, and it's really blue. I went by there today, and it was like, it's really blue. So it really pops. So both inside structurally with the new roof, outside with the, the painting, inside we're doing some minor renovations in there. It is looking nice, and we look forward to continuing to make improvements. We still have some work to do on the concrete all around there, you know, the walkway up and everything else like that, but that'll be down the road. So that was a good meeting. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Temsalvia?
Thank you. I think that salty dog blue would highlight a mural very well.
That's right. I agree.
Good idea. Good idea.
Yeah, I would have thought a mural would have gone on there with all the different things that they do.
Yeah, and, you know, really, Rochester Hills really is way behind us, aren't they? Sad to say. Next is a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Trent, you had the report tonight?
I do. Doug has, Doug Gould has stepped up to the plate, and he will be joining this in the next meeting in November. But I was here to do the report for this meeting on October 12th. We got a report from the Rochester Pollinators. They are, we are, they are slowing down, but they are continuing to work on uploading all the actions to the National Wildlife Federation for the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. They've gotten up to 24 actions out of the 28, which will make us a champion monarch city. There are not very many cities in the nation that have acquired that, but we will make that announcement soon. Then the Dinosaur Hill Pollinator Garden, the Rochester Pollinators are going to partner with them next year and to enhance and replace the pollinator garden that they had built and planted in 2004. So they're going to, we're going to do a mini version of that. Then we've also partnered with the Clinton River Watershed Council to work on the municipal park, Southern Wet Meadow Enhancement. It's a quarter acre, and will be paid for with funds from the Butterfly Pledge that have been raised for the native plant sales. And we've also applied for a grant with the Community, Community Foundation as well for $1,000, and we'll see if we get that, and they'll let us know at their tailgate party. So we also, and the tailgate party on 27th of this month. So the goals and objectives, we also started doing that and brainstorming ideas for next year, and to be determined. So we want to get a lot done, like we did last year with our mural in the park. Yes, we want more, and, yeah, more murals. So we are accepting applications for two new board members, and you can go online at RochesterMI.org for applications and go to Boards and Commissions, and please apply. We're a fun group. We like to think we're the most fun group, but, you know.
It's a pretty fun group.
That to be determined, right? I think, yeah. We do fun things.
Might be.
Could be. Thank you. But I had to resign because I'm on city council. And we are accepting good neighbor applicants. I'm going to put pressure on a lot of people in Rochester. I mean, like, nobody has a good neighbor that they would like to, you know, give a, you know, accolades to and, and help them get an award, because we would like to meet them. We know there are lots of good neighbors in Rochester. And that's it.
Thank you. Next, a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items of note from the meeting. First, we discussed the 2023 Trailway Commission budget, and the impacts to Rochester will be minimal. They're going to look for a 2% increase by municipality. For us, that's roughly $375 in our annual budget. The second part is the bike patrol program. So Oakland County Sheriff's had a huge increase in, in their operating costs, but fortunately, we're only about 8% of that. And again, the impact will be minimal, $261 in the fiscal year. The next thing we talked about were four different grant opportunities for our bridge, 31.7 here on the trail. First was the Michigan DNR Sparks Grant Program, open today. There's three tranches of money, 15 million that could be awarded by January of 2023, 25 million for the spring and summer of 2023, and 25 million for the summer and fall of 2023. So it's money accessible here pretty quickly, which would obviously go a long way if we get some consideration there. The minimum request is $100,000. The maximum request is $1 million. The bridge is probably estimated to run between 900 and 1.2 million, I think. And if we did get some money awarded under that grant program, or any of those grants, we would have to complete the bridge by December 2026. So it still fits within a timeframe that's reasonable. The second was the Michigan DNR Fish Habitat Grant. The minimum request there is 25,000. It does come with a 10% funding match, should we get any of those dollars. The Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan, specifically the Ralph C. Wilson Trails Maintenance Fund, minimum request there is 50,000, maximum is 400,000. That one's a one-to-one match, if we were to win any money there. And lastly, the DNR's Natural Resources Trust Fund, minimum request is 15,000, max is 300,000, and that comes with a 25% funding match. I know the trail manager, Nick, will be reaching out to see if the administration can lend any assistance in grant application completion. And lastly, we talked about, so the Trailway owns a small piece in southeast Rochester off the Clinton River Trail. And we've always debated for years of what we're going to do with it, because it's not, you know, obviously, it's not part of the Pink Creek Trail, but yet we own, own the land. And it's where the Clinton Kalamazoo Canal was. So apparently, a local resident in an estate trust donated $200,000 specifically to designate and develop a spot on a Michigan trail, anywhere in Michigan. So in talks with this, the estate, they want to try and do something here locally. So this is the first time we've ever had an opportunity for funding to this site. So we're going to engage in that discussion. They have requested some assistance from the city engineers, because given the, the money that they're talking, we would want to update our site plan, the project site plan. And they would just request some assistance in helping them do that.
Good. Your pro Temsalvia?
And on that, Councilmember Sage, didn't you announce at a previous meeting that there's also some other large grant money out there, that maybe we could use that trust money for, like, matching, or, because there's other grant money available?
I don't know the exact wording on the trust. You're talking the estate trust? I'd have to get more. We just found out about this.
Just a thought.
Yeah. I don't know if we could use it for matching, because it is specifically designated, well, it might be. If, if that falls under, maybe the city attorney could opine on that, whether it would fall into development of a site on a trail. I don't know. Well, I'll find out.
I'd just like to say, I, I did see on Sunday morning, I was out there, and I saw the Oakland County Sheriff horses out there, which was nice to see, and I thanked them for being out there. So it's good to see they're back. They're back. They're back. Next is a receipt from the Downtown Development Authority. Councilmember Trent?
Okay, maybe the second, most fun committee. Yes. I was the secretary of the DDA, and now Tanya, so I had to resign. And Tanya Cardston, the owner of Tanya's Victorian Rose, was appointed as the new DDA secretary. We also, they also discussed Next Gen Research is the program that Oakland County Main Street created. They want to know, they're researching what's the next generation look like for downtowns, and we were one of the four chosen ones in Michigan. They're only working with, obviously, they're not working with anyone outside of Michigan, but Rochester, Royal Oak, Ferndale, and Farmington. It's a part of a level-up fact-finding. They had a conference call that was held with 30 community stakeholders and merchants. They meant to give input on what the future of Main Street and downtowns could look like. I'm sure they had a set of questions that they asked them about, and I think we'll maybe know one day what those are. They had a lively and engaged discussion, and the outcomes will be compiled for a report for national, to be presented at the National Main Street Event in Boston, Massachusetts, and to us as well, I'm sure. So then Halloween Fest was on October 15th. It was a trick-or-treating for the kids in, in the downtown on Main Street, and it was an overwhelming success with over 3,000 children. I'm not sure what that looks like, but we saw.
It was crazy, Doug.
I drove through. We're crazy.
I was, the merchants were like, don't come, don't come, you know, don't come until, you know, after 12:00. And I think it started at 3:00. They were already shaking. And then there was farmer's market trick-or-treating on October 22nd, but I'm sure that was successful as well. That, because this is the meeting before the 22nd, we didn't get a report. So the Holiday Expo is on November 14th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's at the Royal Park Hotel, and it's a partnership with the Rochester DDA, and chamber members only, and it's a great way to start your holiday shopping early and support your local businesses. Next is the Festival of Trees, is the biggest fundraiser for the Big Bright Light Show, and the kickoff for that festival is of the Trees Cocktail Preview, which many of us know about, on November 18th at 7:00 p.m. You get a preview of the beautifully decorated themed trees, wreaths, centerpieces, and more that are donated by Metro Detroit Community. And then there's food and drinks, libations. I was on the Facebook page of the DDA and, or Downtown Rochester, and this one, a person said the one thing that I think we all agree with. This is the most exciting time of year in Rochester. And the list of full events can be found at the downtownrochestermi.org under Events. And last but not least, Fire and Ice will be back courtesy of Oakland County on Friday and Saturday, January 20 and 21. That's it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Oakland County.
I would say that Halloween has almost become, after Lanyup, the biggest event in town. It was crazy. Chief, chief was out there. He knows. Awfully crowded.
Did you put on your Halloween outfit, Doug?
Um, did not.
Dressed up as the mayor?
Your top hat?
Maybe a baseball hat.
I think maybe next year, maybe I could try.
Um, onto public comment. Mr. Petrino, I need, okay. Brian, oh, Brian?
Yep, there's one caller calling on.
Hello? The number 202, you need to mute, unmute?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hi. Pat Kane, 817 West Fourth Street, Rochester. Just a couple of quick things tonight. I missed the opening public comment, so I wish I didn't have to sit through it all, but I'm glad I did. It was an insight on the health care, although I had read everything, and I'm going to say one thing. We always want to take care of our employees, but please, we can't lose sight of the Cadillac we're actually giving them. It is unheard of really in the area for 95.5. 80/20 is the norm. Spouses and children aren't necessarily covered. This is municipalities, those that are paid through taxation, because taxes, deep pockets, they can have more. They negotiate more. The employers in town aren't paying that. The employers under 50, there's no health care. Larger employees, part-time, you don't have that option. If you want to buy the plan from them because it's less expensive than going in the marketplace, you can, but you're paying their price in full. So I think, I just would say, please don't lose sight while we hand them all this and the other products of what's really happening with the private entities. We have people here that are struggling with health care costs on premiums, and premiums do go up for them, the same ratios, while we're handing so much better to our employees. And I don't want to lose sight where this money comes from. It is hardworking, it's valued, it's our tax dollars giving more to what many of these households even have. So I would just say, please take that under consideration. The next thing is, oh my gosh, yes, the construction. I want to think, thank Chief Chettenhelm and Nick for getting back with us. I did not know that the employee, employees, that neighbors had called Sunday morning with the construction. Again, that started at 7:30 a.m. on a Sunday, and I think I contacted the city, it was after 5:00. We had hammering, except for a half-hour break, constant and sawing all day, while an addition was being put on a house that we know would take a permit. And I think what's happening in our area, we are so oversaturated with so much noise, we have had the roads redone in a circle around us, going on three years of road construction, three years of all this heavy traffic with cut-through, plus all the trucks. We have vehicles on the next street that have exhaust that are, I don't know, manipulated, because they even backfire, and you can hear them block up the street, even though the gentleman now drives slower. You hear them coming up a block away. We are blessed with three trucks with blasting radios and one red motorcycle with a blasting radio that you can hear from well below the administration building, well below coming up the hill on Third Street. Everybody talks about it, and I know the police are frustrated. I know it's against an ordinance when you can hear it more than 50 feet. Everybody's little house shakes or vibrates. But we're inundated with so much noise, plus all the trees being cut down, plus all the construction, and then layer that with everyday neighborhood noises, all the blowers, the lawnmowers, the edges, the commercial stuff in here, to have construction on a Sunday. But I have one thing to say. It's my understanding, when a permit is pulled, and I think Nick told me this a long time ago, that they're given, like, rules and regulations. It states that you would not have construction on a Sunday. So to me, it was blatant disrespect for this to happen for the umpteenth time in our neighborhood. When the police came and stopped him in the morning, and he waited a half hour and then did it all day into after 5:00 o'clock. Shouldn't he just be issued a citation immediate? I know we try to be nice about it, but I don't understand that. Hello?
Yeah, well, depends on.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, that's, that's a big part of it here, and we're getting, everybody's fed up, I gotta tell, I shouldn't say everybody. A good number of residents are fed up with this, because there's no peace. And if you take people, and you have all this construction noise, all the chopping of trees, all the other noises, all the road stuff, and all these trees cut down, so there's nothing even to buffer noise, and then on a Sunday?
I think we all agree.
All day long?
I think, I think we agree with you on that one, Pat, on Sundays.
Yeah, maybe we should just do a citation and, and just kind of be done with it. And the only other thing I will say is I'm disappointed that Planning Commission was canceled. I am now three years with a spotlight effect, as of even tonight, if you pass by. Lock on my front door, my bedroom windows, my living, all through the house. Nothing has changed. And now with a delay, and I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to say this right out loud. We've got a neighborhood light fight that is being marketed heavily, and we're going to have Lanyup and Christmas lights, and everything is about big, bright lights. How do you think this is going to be received? No. The right thing to do. And I'm not the only one. And I guess I'm just very upset that I've crossed a three-year bridge without the use of what I'm paying taxes on, and the rights were given away in language and discriminatory, again, against single-family versus more than a fam, more than two families. And it just isn't right. And everybody's been watching this, that's been in touch with me, and it's just, I can't tell you how I feel at this point. I can't. I can't get a break or a breather on my porch, or my bedrooms, and I'm facing thousands of dollars without. of dollars without still the use of my porch to block some stranger's lights from across the street that he has no business projecting them into my windows. His safety, visibility and security for his lights belongs on his property. I have nothing to do with that. So I will just tell you, I'm very concerned, I'm upset that I have no idea how long it's going to be. And, um, disappointed, very disappointed, very. So I'm going to just kind of leave it at that. And the only other question I had is the Rara building was sold for 2.2 million. Does Councilmember Albrecht know what the net proceeds were after that sale?
Yes, there were net proceeds. I don't have the exact amount, but those proceeds were used, as I reported, to, uh, repair the roof, uh, painting and other, uh, improvements to the current, uh, building.
Yeah, but that wouldn't cost a million dollars, would it? I mean, if, if the building sold for 2.2.
We, we, the net proceeds were not a million dollars and, and the cost of the roof was very exorbitant.
Wow. So they owed that much on the building?
Again, I don't have all the financials.
Okay, okay, I'm just getting at that 2.2 million dollars is a lot of money. And if the net proceeds after the sale were less than a million, um, I don't know. That doesn't seem like very much. It should have been more, but you know, it is what it is. At least the roof got fixed, which is a good thing. Okay, well, that's it. I'll talk to everybody later and everybody just good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And I just will say, the, the Planning Commission meeting that was canceled was the second of the month. So we did have our normal one, we'll have our normal one in November, but we were looking at a second meeting and there were some quorum issues at the date we could get. So on to general and miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I, thank you, Mayor. I've got four quick things here. Number one, sorry, your $40,000 that we approved at Dino Hill did a remarkable job. I went, walked it through with Carl, I know Alec went through also, and it was a monumental task, what they did there to clear those paths. And I think tomorrow maybe, we're waiting to see how the weather's going to be, but the last thing is to get a bucket truck. There's two big giant cottonwoods hung up that they have to get out, but what they did to clear the path, we came up with an agreement about what's natural area and anything you can get on the ground flat that's not dangerous and the areas that are meant to be natural is good for habitat, for the bunnies and for the salamanders and everything. So we came to a great agreement. We, we'll probably get close to spending that 40, but the guys from David that were in there, we took them lunch. It was amazing hard work, nasty work and boy, they did a heck of a job. It was, Alec, you agree, it was impressive what they did there, so that was great. Um, Friday, uh, the Pixlees have worked with Oakland University to, um, to redo our columbarium in the cemetery and there's a little ceremony. I think it's at 4:00, I'm going to check with Vern tomorrow, um, just to dedicate the columbarium. They cleaned it up really nicely and kind of low-key. What's that? The receiving vault, I'm sorry, not the columbarium, you're right. Receiving vault. So, um, so that's taking place. Um, Edison has confirmed they will be here at your November meeting to give us an update on what happened in this last one and then their plans, what they're doing now and what they plan on doing in our community. So Jennifer and her engineers will come with a full presentation on the 14th. I got them to come here, so that's great. And the last, I think why James is here is, um, I think I mentioned this or I probably put in the manager's report that we were informed that because of the, uh, US Census for 2020, we got an additional Class C quota license assigned to the city. Haven't had one in a long time. Market value, 75 to 80,000 dollars. So, uh, when the Roxy folks came in, you heard a little bit about the Roxy and it was pretty well received at the planning commission, quite frankly. Looks like a good project. At the same time, Kelly Allen, their liquor licensed attorney, she's the one that noticed that we got a free quota. The state, of course, didn't let us know. So she immediately made a, a request, filled out the proper, uh, $750, um, application and submitted that for consideration. And there's a, in the ordinance, it talks about 14 things that we would consider, what, you know, the investment, the employees, what, what ratios, food, the liquor, all these good things. She filled it out well last Wednesday. Um, I, I can say this now, Patty Eisenbrunn, who is Brown Iron Brewery, uh, they also, she's been trying to find a place in town for seven years to buy, not lease. So the Roxy's leasing their property, um, from the Village Shoe Inn, former Village Shoe Inn. And Patty also is obviously had a liquor license in Royal Oak and at Brown Iron and they saw that there's an extra one, so they applied and, and filled out their application and paid their fee. So what I did was I went through and took both applications, went apples to apples, checked with Attorney Crot and Chief Steve, and we went over to make sure it was a unbiased spreadsheet that you're going to get Friday in the manager's report that will tell you what one is proposing, what the other's proposing. And I'd like to bring November 14th for discussion, it's up to this body to, you don't have to grant it to anybody, but you would consider the two requests for this free liquor license moving forward. So I'm going to give you good data that's just straight line, not an opinion. This is what each is doing compared to each other, their narratives, both great, um, projects. Um, and then we'll see what happens, what council wants to do. You could make a deliberation and give that, uh, okay, that night, or we can delay. So yeah, we, oh yeah, we'd have to set the public hearing, you're right, to have an actual public hearing on that. That night, we could set the public hearing, um, at some time in the future.
Is the public hearing the only public notice we need to give about this availability of a license? It feels like, okay, so these two people happen to find out about it, but what about all the other people?
It's a good question.
I, I don't think there's any.
There's not requirement, but right.
By the city. I mean, the city just found out. I mean.
Yeah.
I don't think that there's any, it's just when you go through and consider whether to grant one, the city's, uh, liquor control ordinance requires a public hearing, that newspaper, you know, everything, so.
So I guess the second side of your que, if you wanted us to put on the website that there isn't available, but we hadn't done in the past, knowing that these two are, uh, both quality, qualified, um.
I think we should probably publicize it. I mean, maybe there's other qualified people.
Yeah.
Just to be fair.
To be fair, this is always a good thing. Transparent.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Transparency.
Okay, um, and that's it.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Just a reminder that two weeks from tomorrow's election day, November 8th, not November 1st, um, polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Um, City Hall will also be open on Saturday, the 5th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM for absentee ballots and registration and anything else election related.
How's the absentee ballot numbers so far?
Um, we've issued just over 3,000 and we've gotten 1,000 back, but I expect that'll pick up over the next couple of weeks, so.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Uh, nothing this evening, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Rochester was very well represented at SEMCOG last week. We had Anthony, Marcy and myself, so we were able to cover all the sessions and, uh, got great information and met lots of, uh, interesting people, made some good connections, so more to come from SEMCOG.
All right. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Trent?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson?
No, thank you.
I would just like to say, this was a beautiful weekend and I thought our parks and trails looked fantastic, so thank you to the DPW. Um, it was a great job and I think Rochester looked great this weekend. So thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.